Budget workshop agenda for the town of Andover Board of Selectmen dated February 2nd, 7 o'clock. We're gonna call it to order and we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
For the Republic.
To the Republic.
Which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice. For all.
Okay, since I skipped the last meeting, public speak. Kathy, Mike, would you like to say anything? No, okay. Diane Chiquet?
I'm good, thanks.
Joanne Eber? Okay. All right, let's get to it. Do we have any department presentations that we're gonna go through tonight? No. Okay. Eric? You have provided us information, I'm assuming that we can start. Actually, let's ask, let's poll, you know, I feel bad, I didn't wait for Paula, is Paula joining us?
No, she has a prior engagement.
Okay.
And I'm actually gonna have to hop off early as well, I've got something to take care of, so.
Well, that just means we cancel the rest of the meeting, right?
No, I'm good till 8:00, so.
Jeff, can I make a suggestion? If you wanted something to get a little progress, my suggestion would be first to deal with the general wage increases or not for town employees. Second would be specific recommendations about what you want to do with the library director's increased hours. Third would be recommendations to the Board of Finance for the salaries for Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk and Registrar's Office, and then decisions about other staffing levels as a way to get something discreet accomplished.
Okay. Does anyone have? We had a presentation from Carol Lee last week, does anyone have a problem with Carol Lee's request?
6%?
Yep, I'm asking you.
Will you reiterate the request, Mr. Pressions up with it?
Eric, Eric, Eric.
Yes, what's your question?
No, 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 I'm looking for something you sent us.
If you allow me to screen share, I'll pull it up.
Pull up her budget line item.
You wanna see the budget line item or you wanna see the document with all the personnel costs?
Oh, we can see both of them, let's do the whole thing at one time.
Okay. Okay, what you're looking at should be the, for all the employees that have essentially variable costs. By variable, I mean they're not linked, like, they're not linked in right now by union contract in one form or another.
Do we wanna set just one rate for everyone that is on this, or do we wanna go through them individually? Anyone?
I personally would rather do one rate, as much as I'm sympathetic to, you know, the ask.
Another thing though is some of these, some of these, some of these positions have actually taken on additional responsibilities. And so, I don't know if, do you think a blanket, uh, number would be reasonable, Adrian, or should we do them, you know, based on, you know, require, you know, change?
Well, who would you, who would you, um, who would you split out?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just, just for, just to say for, arguing to say Carol Lee. Like, what is she, what is she doing different than she was doing a year or two ago? And what justifies 6%?
Well, I think Carol's justification for the 6% is that the volume of things that she's now tasked with has increased. You know, in that, you know, her office is bringing in more revenue, and so, it, I think that's basically her justification. On the flip side of that, I would say that as things have been modernized, the level of things that she has to do on the other side of that have probably gone down. So, if we're playing devil's advocate, that's the other side of it, right? So, you know, now a lot of the Realtors can come in and access things electronically where they didn't, you know, where they had to go digging through and maybe needed help with the books before. So, they used to, you know, now the copier is linked right together, they, you know, they got a whole system, so.
All right, well, I know that she's doing, they're doing transfer station stickers, I know that's traditional.
Well, and I think gun permits got shifted from the, um, Selectman's office down to her office like that, a lot of that is kind of a little bit handled down her way now too, so. But, again, it's an elected position, you know. She has a lot of autonomy. You know, so again, I mean, I think that could go either way. I think my only concern, I mean, I only concern with doing that is, if you throw an outlier like that in there, especially given that we're going into negotiations with the unions, that we may end up with that getting thrown back at us in a discussion. You know?
I just have a question about the transfer station stickers, and this could be to Eric too. Is there anything, would it be a bad idea to turn that over to the attendance staff? Or is that something that you wanna keep in the Town Clerk's office?
So, you would be requiring them to take money at the transfer station? And then account for how transported, how, where would it be secured? I think if you wanted to look at long-term solutions, you look towards an online permitting solution to be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, Bolton does that, right, Eric?
And then pick up your sticker at the transfer station.
Well, or just have it mailed to you.
Yeah, Bolton does that, I think.
But you give up what was the original board's concern, which is the concern about people scamming, because you've lost the physical act of putting something on a windshield. Whether that's valid or not.
Could we somehow serialize those so they would have the license plate number on them when we, like, could we handle it with a Sharpie, so when they stick it on their windshield?
No, but you could, I mean, you could have the transfer station attendants, they get something in the mail saying they're a verified resident for that car. They could then show their registration and a approval, how the attendant put the stickers on.
The system as it works right now, Carol is checking that that town, that car is registered in town?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, for those of us that have to use the transfer station, Jeff, you know.
Adrian, I don't know if you noticed, but my sticker number is 10. So.
Wait, I didn't know we could get vanity sticker numbers.
We did, 10. That's what happens when you go down there and you give your town the money quickly and early in the process. You get a low sticker number.
I just know that that's been, she, that's something that she mentioned the other, when she spoke to us.
Carol, Carol's issue to me is not that. I believe Carol's issue is that previously she had been bypassed for any, she never felt she was being treated fair, that's the issue. And.
And I would remind the board that all you do, unlike other officials, because she's an elected official, all you do is make a recommendation to the Board of Finance if you so choose.
Well, looking over these names, I mean, the biggest issues that we have to deal with is we have to deal with Eric, we have to deal with Amanda. And we have to deal with the library. I mean, the rest of them, Adrian can sit there and be correct that we need to, we can do 1.5%, I mean, listen, we have troubles. It's not like we're not in troubles, but then again, that does not line up with what has been negotiated and given to union employees. So, that is the, that is the other side of this. I mean, I believe you have a placeholder in there, or you may have changed this, so you have a 2% raise in this one. You had a 1.5% raise in the previous one that we've got.
So, the first column in there represents the inflation rate, which is basically 1.15% today. So, if you wanna just zero out inflation, which is what you were talking about doing several meetings previously, that's what that line item was, and the other just represents standard increments. And the last column there is what people have actually asked for. So, for comparison, that's what it looks like across the board, 1.15%, 2%, 2.5% and 3%.
Okay, so, just let's think of it this way, each, each percentage point that we go on, the people that are subjected to these raises is $5,137. That's the total amount of money we're talking about. So, if we say.
Eric, I mean, do you, Wally and Linda made the argument for their situation. Do you agree with it, that they're putting in a lot of hours?
Yeah, and it, and from my perspective, for all appearances sake, we, more than likely, we are, the state is moving towards allowing, you know, full mail-in registration for everybody going forward.
That's fine, so, can we just pick these off and move through them? I would make a motion then that we accept the registrar's requested salary increase.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Anyone wanna talk about their position?
No.
Okay, so, so before we do that, Eric, what is that number?
$6,000.
Six.
It's an increase from just about $4,000. So, they'd get a $2,000 bump.
Pretty good bump.
Well, it is, but, you know.
Do we have, like, a listing, how many, are they tracking their hours, like, how much you're spending there?
No, because they're, they're not hourly. So, I'm sorry, Eric, I need to cut you off.
No, I mean, Wally did present to you at the last meeting a, a, basically what he felt they were spending in hours.
Yeah.
I didn't remember what that was off the top of my head.
It was, it was pretty, it was a pretty ugly number.
Thought it was twice as many hours.
Yeah, it is. I mean, honestly, he's worried that if they dump it on him, his argument was that if they dump everything, they're saying they're gonna dump, even this isn't gonna be enough.
Are Carol's wages in line with other communities? She's been here 22 years.
They're, they're very much under other communities, but we're not on that yet, let's get through this and we'll hit them one at a time, is that okay? Scott?
Sure, I thought we just talked about the other two.
No, we haven't voted. Any other discussion on the registrars? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's take the registrars off of our list.
Let's just go in order, Eric?
Okay. Oh, so, in order would be Town Clerk.
Nope, now you're up next, oh yeah, we skipped Carol, you're right, sorry. I was going down, not backwards.
When's the last time she did have an increase, do we know?
She got a two and a, she would have gotten a 2.5% increase last year with the regular, with all the, you know, non-union employees.
She had a bunch of years where she just got like 1%. In the course of the 20-something years, her salary's gone up about 25% in 22 years. In that time, we went from dial-up to internet, you know, with the fiber optics.
You know, the only thing I would tell you, Adrian, is I'm much more, I'd rather give, I don't, I don't have a problem with Carol's request, actually.
Okay.
I don't like to sit there and pay any more money than we need to, I'm not like that, but I would sit there and tell you that if, out of all of the people in that, in the town offices, Carol is always there, besides Eric, Carol is always there.
Okay, so, so you're in favor of this?
I have no problem discussing what is fair for Carol and her position.
Okay, so what's fair?
Well, what are we gonna give everybody else? If you wanna sit there and say, are we gonna give them 1%, 2%? Every, let's just, across the board, because there's a lot of.
What's the current, what's the current union contract?
Oh, God.
So, there's no one current union contract?
What's the percentage between them?
So, the highest is Roberta at 4%.
Wow.
But that was because John Chaponas agreed to not take a raise for the whole duration of the contract and allow Roberta to take a larger raise.
Okay.
At the low end, I think it's 2.5%.
So, is there a middle one, or is it just 2.5 and 4?
Uh, no, some employees are at 3% raises.
You mean the Public Works Department?
Yes.
I mean, listen, we only have, what, six, seven union employees?
Correct.
Okay. And I know you have the contract number up here, but you don't have the percentage up here, so. So, okay, let's sit there and say the, the Public Works is three, Roberta is four, and then, what is, what is the Assistant Treasurer?
The Assistant Treasurer is three.
And what is the, the, the Building Department? Administrative person?
Uh, as far as I know, she would be three also.
Okay, so basically.
Across the board.
Basically, we're 3%, 3%.
The, the majority of employees are at 3%.
So, who's at 2.5?
It would be three too, if it wasn't for.
Who's at 2.5?
Um, I'm trying to think, I thought that, I thought we had one employee at 2.5.
Who?
I may be wrong though.
I don't think it's fair that union employees get three and we give everybody else less.
I agree. Do you wanna stick with the three then, for Carol?
Well, let's take care of everybody else and then let's talk about Carol and Eric.
You're probably right, there probably are not, probably all the union employees are at three, other than Chaponas, which is at zero.
I would make a motion that all the employees, with the exception of Carol Lee, Eric Anderson, in the library, the, the library librarian, let's, I would make a motion that we do 3% to match what our contractual obligations are to union employees.
And now Carol?
No, let's talk about those after. Let's pick off as much as we can here.
I second that, let's go. Further discussion on a 3% raise for everyone, it's gonna total $15,000.
Actually, it's not even 15.
Well, actually, you're taking out, Eric, you're taking out some of those. It's, it's gonna be 15.
Well, according to his calculation, he's got up, it'd only be 10 if we did everybody.
Listen, that includes Eric and Carol.
Yeah, it'd be 990, 9923, which is a good thing you're not my accountant.
Mine is Carol and mine is Eric.
No, I'm just teasing, it's in the spreadsheet though, Jeff.
Yeah, because every percent is basically $3,300.
Yeah. So, 9923 if we got everybody, but we're pulling out those other ones, so, yeah.
Wow. I'm looking at a spreadsheet that has everybody on it, I'm, okay.
Eric's got it up on the screen.
No, I see, I see, well, this is where he started with, this is his spreadsheet, not mine. Okay. So, you're talking, Eric, put your cursor and increase the size of this thing, and put, put your, your item like where it is.
Whoops.
Whoa.
That's a little too enhanced.
Yeah, that, well, that would have worked.
Just click on the box.
Just click on the cell and then drag it over.
Just go click on that cell.
So, that's the cell.
That's the cell.
And that's everybody, and does that include Eric, or does that not include Eric?
Uh, in this case, that includes me.
And Carol.
And Carol. But that does not include what you just agreed to for the registrar.
Doesn't matter, they're $4,000 and that's, we understand that. Okay, so, $10,000.
All of Jeff.
All right, has anybody got any further discussion on $10,000? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Carol Lee, let's discuss Carol's situation. So, can you go up to Carol Lee and the Town Clerk? And what is the number? Where is the increase?
Far right.
So, she currently makes $47,900. What she requested at a 6% salary would be $50,774.
Okay. And everybody has said that previously she has not gotten raises? Or 1% raises? Adrian, you, you had some knowledge of that?
Yeah, she had, she had, she had laid it out, and over the, the whole course of her career, her total increase is about 25% in 22 years. Total.
Well, it, it is not, you know. So, what are we talking about, a $1,500 raise? Uh, no, sorry, a $3,000 raise?
Yeah.
Okay. And where is she at, your spreadsheet goes by percentages, do you have one that does 4%?
Something, one doesn't seem right with that, because if you wanted the 3%, it goes 49, goes from 46,7906 to 49,343 with 3%, and then she's only asking for another $1,000 to get to 6%.
Eric, click on, click on your, click on your, click on your, click on your proposed salary, so we can see what the, no, click on your proposed. On D, like, it's, uh, column K. Click on K.
I'm sure we're talking about the right number.
Not requested, proposed.
So, what was your question?
Can you show us the formula, just highlight the cell?
Go over to your proposed one. One over.
That is.
We're on requested, we wanna see proposed.
The 3% number.
Yep.
Column K.
Thank you.
That's correct. This doesn't look right for some reason.
That's because it's taken J3. It should be I3.
Hang on. That's why it's not showing up, just not enough digits in that column.
That number is correct, so.
All right, we're good.
So. So, Eric, the current, the current salary is $47,900. So, let's take that and minus that out.
That's like 20, 2,800.
$2,800. Have you eliminated the first selectman's salary for this period? Uh, she can have my $2,500, she deserves it, let's go. I, this, I'll make a motion that we give Carol the requested 6% raise.
I can tap.
All right, further discussion?
Vote.
Yeah, she's bringing it more than that, and, um, yeah, transfer sticking, transfer sticking.
Exactly, yep.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. What are we doing with Selectmen? What do you guys wanna do?
I'm not opening up that can of worms, I said, I brought it up last year.
I'm requesting that the first selectman's salary be zero. I, that doesn't mean that it can't change in the future, and, and somebody that comes in this position wants the $2,500, they can have it. I'm, I make a motion that we leave it at zero for this next upcoming year. Scott, second that motion?
Second.
Okay. I realize, then Jeff brought it up last year, that there is additional work, but at this point in time, I don't do it for the money, so. You could always increase it back to a reasonable, more reasonable number. So, all those in favor of zero?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And I, and I don't do that for any other purpose, but I'm the first selectman, so, selectman salaries, what would you like to do with that, you wanna leave it where it was?
We had this discussion before amongst ourselves, and we decided we would probably leave it.
Okay. So, change that, Eric?
The proposed is 4,800, which is 1,200 per.
Oh, okay.
Selectmen. So, I'll have to go back and change it on the main spreadsheet, because that was a blank at this point.
That's fine.
But I'll do that.
All right.
Eric, did what I do last year, did that work out okay? Did that complicate anything, did it?
Gives them something to do.
Okay.
Okay. I would rather discuss with each of you individually, Eric, and come back to him next week, unless you guys really have a definitive reason that we have to get that one done today.
No, that's fine.
Would we, um, do we want to, um, just at the end of this, go in an executive session real quick?
Uh, I don't think we can.
We have to put it on the, the agenda?
No.
You do not, you could go into executive session if you so chose.
I'd rather wait till Paula's part of that conversation, and as I said, I've gotta leave in about a half hour, so.
Okay, that's true.
Let's, we could do the library.
The library. So, Amy, so the library is requesting additional four hours?
We're already, we're already, we're already giving her benefits and stuff like she was there, so. The, the small contingent that they're asking for is already, we're already paying for it in benefits, it makes no sense to not get the hours.
So, they're looking for more money for the extra hours, or they're, they can't cover that in their existing budget?
Apparently not.
Yeah, so, there, I mean, in truth, the library budget not including salaries is in the mid-20s, it's a very small budget. Salary is, is the vast majority of their budget, so, no, I don't think they could absorb that, that's either, it's either a decision we make or we don't make.
Just a quick question, was that line item significantly underspent this year because of COVID?
Uh, no, because basically, Amy has been treated as a professional in the sense that she doesn't log hours.
But she's just a straight salary and she's getting a weekly, she's getting a check.
Correct, she's a straight salaried.
Understood.
And I think.
The que, the question I would ask is to go along.
The que, the question I would ask is to go along with what Jeff asked is, is, did we have reduced hours for the rest of the employees?
Because the library was closed.
Yeah, but they've been trying to accommodate in other ways by being open to deliver books to people and, and it still take requests to do, do curbside and they've done a lot of workarounds.
So the answer to your question is it was somewhat reduced this year, but not a lot.
And so over the course of the year, what are we talking about is for the increase on the, on Amy?
Uh, so over a year, it's around $6,000. Goes from forty two, two to basically forty eight.
For four hours?
Yeah, you're going from twenty six to thirty.
What's her hourly rate?
Um, I don't have it on this sheet. I'm sure I could figure it out pretty quick.
Thirty one dollars and twenty two cents.
Yeah, that's about right.
So is she replacing anybody's hours or she's just adding to the libraries' hours that are worked?
Honestly, I, I think what, where, where the library, so let me just back up and say, I went to the library board because the problem is, is that we have a personnel policy. But the library has never followed it for the director. In other words, she's always been treated basically as a full-time employee in terms of benefits and in terms of, you know, vacation, all of that, yet she's never actually worked thirty hours. So the first question I asked is, is that realistic? And you know, Amy's response is, well, I pretty much always work thirty hours. I've just never been able to, you know, get paid for thirty hours. So.
So Jeff's, so Jeff's question is really the most pertinent one. Is she salaried or she hourly?
She's salaried, basically.
Then she's working thirty hours a week right now. That's what her salary is predicated on and that's why she's given benefits.
Yeah, we're increasing her hourly rate, but she's a salary employee.
And what are we doing?
Well.
I mean, and listen, I understand why you went after library for the personnel policy and like what we were trying to do. I just. You know, I, I, I know the library does a lot of great work for the community, but I don't, I don't know. Do they really have, you know, two hundred more hours? That they're gonna use your services for? Because that's what we're talking about.
I think the argument was made that she's already putting them in anyways because she's salaried.
She was salaried already. So what's the point?
Yeah, I work fifty hours a week. I don't get paid any more than if I work forty or fifty.
Nobody's saying, I'm with Jeff Murray. Nobody's paying me anywhere for my eighty hours. It ain't happening.
And Scott walked away from the conversation, so. Scott's like, I, I don't want them to look at my overdue library books. I'm leaving.
I mean, honestly, we're just, we're just giving a raise. I, I mean, I would, I would, you know, I, I don't believe the library is going to come back to us and tell us where the extra two hundred dollars is going to go.
What would their salary go up with a 3% versus what they're asking for? I mean, if we're going to do 3% across the board, what does that work out for her?
Amy, oh, 3% works out to forty three thousand four seven nine.
So twelve hundred bucks or whatever.
I mean, I think if we're giving everybody else the increase, that would be the prudent thing to do if she's a salary employee.
Well, oh, oh, yeah. I, I mean, I guess it depends how you define salaried employees. Um, you know, her, she gets paid for twenty six hours a week at whatever her rate is. But since we know, we've never required her to log hours. Um, you know. That's what it is.
Besides you, Eric, do we, and I guess, I'm just trying to go through the town employees. I mean, Carol is an, is essentially a, I mean, I mean, honestly, all the union employees, the way the contracts have been written in the past are all salary employees. They're not hourly employees. The way this, the contracts are written, they're all salary.
Well, that's not really true because they get overtime.
Um, so they're not, so they're non-exempt salary employees. Because if you're exempt salary employee, you don't get covered overtime. If you're non-exempt, you get overtime.
Correct.
Whereas the library is an exempt salary position.
But she can't.
She doesn't get paid overtime. If she was working thirty hours a week, she's not going to be paid overtime over twenty six. So it's an exempt position. The library does not pay overtime.
Yeah, we'd get overtime if she worked more than, nah, no, she probably wouldn't. Hmm.
All right. How about, how about we do this? We give her a 3% raise, reduce her hourly rate and give her thirty hours a week.
I'll second that.
Okay, I made.
A motion? Is that a motion?
That's a motion, sure.
So let me get this straight. You're going to just say you're, the bottom line is you're going to give her, she's going to earn 3% more than she does now. But you want to just reduce her hourly wage to reflect that, that she's working thirty hours.
Just so we're clear, I think you're asking for a labor board case.
All right, then Eric, can you go to, uh, a labor attorney and ask the question as to how to handle this? And come back to us.
I mean, you know, I, I, I think if you wanted and you wanted to say, how do we do this legally? We do what I had asked the board to do you guys last year, which is sign a standalone professional contract, you know, with Amy, like, like I have. Um, you know, which lays out, lays out everything. And if both parties sign it, then it's kosher. You know, when you could do it.
Do you have that drafted for us?
I could have it drafted for you. I haven't yet.
Then let's bring it up at our next budget meeting, get it in place and let's do it. Because to me, it makes no sense to just give her four hours.
Especially if she's never logged her hours before. If you've logged your hours and it's a, then it's a salary plus overtime position. If you're not logging your hours, it's kind of an ad hoc position where you're expected to be there so many hours.
Okay. So does that take care of all of the, the positions other than Amy and Eric and Amanda? We have to discuss Amanda also outside of this. Okay.
Are we discussing Amanda or no?
Well, let's discuss Amanda. Amanda, how much do you want to make? I'm only kidding. Don't answer that.
All right, I'll ask. Amanda, how much do you want to make?
I'm going to see her face.
Yeah, Amanda, you have to be on this call.
I, I, I gotta get, I gotta get the, you gotta get this spreadsheet out of here. Now I gotta see Amanda.
I'm here.
She's still filing, which is good.
Amanda, how many hours you work?
It depends on the week. Um, I'm supposed to work nineteen hours a week. Um, honestly, I do go over every week. Um, and then it depends on the week due to board meetings. So I, I try to honestly balance every week and. Yeah.
But you love your job.
I do.
That's not a fair car, that's not a fair ask though.
I do love the job. Um.
Amanda, how many hours are you working over a week currently? How many hours do you need to do the job?
Um, right now I think I'm at an average of like twenty two to twenty three hours a week. Um. Yeah.
Okay. And Eric, what did you request for Amanda?
Back up a second. Amanda, are you paid separately for the board meetings or is that coming out of your nineteen?
That's a good question. I believe it is supposed to come out of my nineteen because I am one person technically doing two different jobs, I suppose, depending how you look at it.
So you're not getting, you're not getting, don't we have a clerk budget?
We do, but I'm still one person. So.
Are you paying money out of the clerk budget?
Right.
Are you?
Yes, she's getting paid out of the clerk budget and getting paid separately as my administrative assistant.
So you're doing nineteen hours under administrative assistant and then you're doing additional hours under clerking budget?
Basically, yes.
And you actually make more money when you're clerking as long as the meetings don't go too long?
Yeah, technically.
Well, it's not technically. It is or it isn't. Because you get what? Sixty five for the first hour?
No, it's actually a hundred for the first hour and twenty for each additional hour.
Okay.
So then technically you make more money clerking.
Technically.
Okay.
So you're getting an additional three or so, four hours clerking a week?
Um, depends on the week. Some weeks there's no meetings, some, there, there's usually just two meetings a month for me now, except for right now. Because of the workshops.
Okay.
So on the weeks that I have board meetings, I try to work less hours as the admin assistant, but that doesn't always work out.
I don't understand. So why are you working less hours as an admin assistant if you're paid out of a different budget?
Because technically I'm really not supposed to be going over twenty hours of employment per week with Amanda.
Because then she's, we're required to do.
We have to pay benefits when we do that.
At twenty.
Right. And so Amanda, we can get this out of the way. If, if, if we offered you benefits, is it you only, or is it you and your, your spouse? What would it be?
Um, well, I know if it's, um, if I do get bumped up to twenty six hours, it would only be offered to myself. Regardless. So, um, yeah, I mean, I will say this. I feel like it would benefit the town. Um, if I had more hours as the admin assistant, I mainly do communication tasks, um, which I love. Um, but I feel like there's other things that I could be helpful with to take some things off of Eric's plate and others' plates as well.
And what are those things?
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
I would love, well, I guess depends what Eric would want to throw on, on my plate. Um.
Are you saying you have a stamp in your desk that has his name on it? You, you're doing paperwork for him now?
Just slightly, I would say. I'm, I feel like I'm Eric's assistant, but I'm mostly everyone's assistant, not just his, to be honest.
Okay.
Okay, so, so if we did this twenty six hours, Eric, what, what is the salary cost and what are the, the benefit costs?
So the salary cost is roughly eight thousand dollars. The total cost is a change from around twenty two thousand dollars a year total cost to somewhere around forty seven thousand dollars a year total cost.
And that's just for her health insurance?
That's health insurance plus MRF. So remember at twenty hours, we enroll people in MRF also.
I just want to be clear. I, I would want the change to be made because I'm needed, not just because I want the change or I may want the change. I want it to be because it's necessary.
Uh, Eric, is it necessary?
It would make my life easier. Um, you know.
No, listen, that was an unfair question. I, I.
No, it's not an unfair question because listen, if we're going to do that, let's talk about this. Playing devil's advocate. We just hired somebody in public works that's going to take a little bit of weight off your shoulders, Eric.
Correct.
You know? What's that?
I agree with you, Adrian. I think, uh, I think Jay's going to take a ton of.
You know?
Spontaneous of Eric.
But maybe Amanda can start kicking some of that stuff she's been doing back to Eric now that he has more free time.
Isn't that what we're trying to do is run a better operation?
Or is there any, is there a position in, uh, the town hall where we could use her skills that we're lacking or something that she could pick up?
Well, that's a loaded question.
Well, no, I just, or is there, can we combine it a bit? Can we combine a position and allow Amanda to do that? It's just, I'm just asking a question.
Amanda, do you have a finance degree? We need a finance person.
So if you look at the budget, one of the things I am suggesting, which, you know, I, I personally have heartburn with, but I think we almost have to is we never did hire a municipal agent. Um, because frankly, we haven't been in a position where we could, uh, use an agent because the reality is, you know, most senior programming can't happen right now. So I mean, one of the things I anticipated with this budget is basically keeping the primary responsibility for that with Roberta um, and not hiring a standalone municipal agent. Um, and you know, that is roughly a twelve thousand dollar savings by doing that. Um, I would think that Amanda would end up with some of the load for doing that, although the primary would stay with Roberta.
So primary contact is to Roberta and Amanda will be what? Picking up some of the communication lift and, and paperwork?
I would suspect we work out some kind of sharing agreement to do that. Um.
Amanda, you're sort of blank faced over there. Do you agree with that?
How much is Roberta being paid for that work?
Uh, I'd have to look it up exactly. Um. It's actually probably going to depend on, because that was, the agreement was a rider on top of the union contract. I think she was making, I want to say it's thirty four hundred dollars a year right now. Um, but the union contract is up for negotiation. So, you know, it would end up being negotiated.
Is there something we can put together for the next meeting? Just to put together like a presentation of like what? Because I just don't, I don't want to do this just be, I mean, I like Amanda. I'd love to have you stay. You know, but we need to, for the taxpayers in town, we need to make sure that there's a need and she's fulfilling additional needs instead of just throwing her extra hours.
Are you suggesting firing her? I mean, you're saying not stay?
No, I'm not saying like, I'm just saying if she found a full-time position somewhere else and ended up leaving our employment.
Well, maybe what we can ask Eric to do is Eric not only give us, uh, the, the logic behind it. So when we do vote on it, we're, we're understanding, but also find if there's other dollars in other departments that can be, um, directed to Amanda. So if you need to take the thirty four hundred dollars from Roberta and give it to Amanda, then at least that's thirty five hundred because the number that you're asking that, that is, is being discussed is over twenty five thousand dollars.
Yep, it's a huge ask.
All right, but let's, I, I think we need to clarify a little bit. Okay. Um. This cannot be a conversation about Amanda. It has to be a conversation about Amanda's position and whether or not those hours are required. As much as I adore you, Amanda, you know, you may move on and if we, if, if this is something we're doing, we're supposed to be doing it because Eric needs more time with her or the town is going to utilize her in some other way and needs that. It can't be about whether Amanda, Amanda needs benefits. It can't be about any of that. It has to be about.
And that was the point I was making. I, we need to make, it needs to be, there needs to be a need. We need to, we need to satisfy a need.
And Amanda, you know, that's not a slight against you. I just.
No, that's actually exactly what I was trying to say before is, um, I would want it to happen if, if my position was if I was needed more. Um, and I will say that I, I. if I was needed more. Um, and I will say that I, I am interested in helping with senior social services. Um, and I would like to work with Roberta if that opportunity comes. Um, that would be, uh, wonderful. For the town.
Well, we appreciate you being open to other opportunities.
But it all needs to be clarified.
Yep.
Finalized. And all the numbers. So you need to know where the money's coming from.
What, you know, as, as, you know, Jeff asks, can you just maybe boil this down a little bit more for us at the next meeting?
Sure. What is it that, I'm not clear what exactly you want though? What is it that you're, you're asking?
You're gonna give us a job description in essence? What it needs to do and what that, I'm sorry, what the position needs to do? And what other functions in other departments that position can assist with? That either are getting done by someone else and they're being paid for it or not getting done? And then we can sit there and make the determination as to, okay, those are appropriate and this is where the money's gonna come from.
Right. Well, and also I think we need to know how those are getting broken down. And then are we also in a situation where is Amanda still gonna be clerking the way she's clerking now? Or is that encompassing? You know? That needs to be part of that conversation.
And, and the money savings that you had from the municipal agent could be used. Pay Amanda.
Again, this is not about Amanda though.
Yeah, well, to, to pay for the new, uh,
To pay for the positions, Scott.
Pay for the position.
Scott, I'm not trying to put you on, on, on task. I just.
You knew what I meant, Adrian.
I know, but the public needs to know.
Yep.
I don't want this to be misconstrued.
That's why we're clarifying it all.
Thank you.
Amanda, personally, I love you. I don't care what anyone else thinks, Amanda.
Jeff, they're recording this. Your wife's gonna find out.
My wife can watch it on, oh no, we don't have cable. We can't watch public access.
I'm gonna send her the YouTube link.
Oh yeah, that's, okay. Um, Adrian, what is your timeline?
Uh, a couple minutes here. Yeah.
Okay, what else do you wanna discuss in the six minutes we have Adrian with us?
So I know Adrian had some, some feelings regarding the supplemental insurance for cybercrime. Um, so I think that's one other decision. It might not be a bad idea to make tonight. So that everybody knows Kirma has provided fairly minimal, but some uh, cyber insurance for towns as part of their comprehensive package. They've eliminated that because they had, uh, a little over $2 million in claims this year across the municipalities in Connecticut. They've offered, uh, they've done a bunch of research and come up with standalone policies for towns. If towns choose to adopt it. The minimum cost for this town is about 10,300, somewhere in there. Uh, for basic cyber policy. So the first question is, do we want to pursue a policy or do we want to roll the dice? Um, you know, and where do we want to go with it? Cause that is a fairly large cost implication to the town.
Uh, Eric, is, um, is, is any, uh, actions been taken like training the employees on phishing scams? And how to identify phishing emails?
Uh, yes, we signed up for a online training program that all the employees are required to complete called Security Mentor. Um, which basically every month there's a lesson employees have to complete on some security topic relating to town hall employees.
Do they get a, uh, do they get a test email once in a while to see if they can identify?
I was just gonna ask that.
No, we don't. You know, we've talked about it with South Windsor, um, but there's, that's not part of that program.
I would just like to see how many employees would fall for it if we did send one out. Because if we send one out, there's definitely some gaps that.
Yeah.
Training that we need to look at.
Well.
I personally, I personally get one about once a week.
Listen, my, my take, my take on this was anybody, anytime we're doing, the biggest thing you worry about, I personally worry about is financial transactions, right? So anytime we're doing a financial transaction that involves a wire transfer, any of that stuff, there should be a secondary, um, verification required, like whether it's a PIN number or something. Um, so that if somebody hacks, they can't just access our bank accounts and start wiring stuff, you know? Um, beyond that, I don't personally think that the $10,000 is a good use of resources. Um, you know, uh, that's my own take on it insurance wise. Um, but I'm open to, to listen to other people here.
Has there been other towns that have been experiencing this and have they?
Oh god, everybody's experiencing this, Scott. Everybody.
No other, other towns?
Yeah, Hartford got hacked, Windsor got, Wyndham got hacked. I mean, everybody's getting hacked. The, the, those bigger towns though have a lot more online access issues than we do. In general. Um, but everybody's at risk. I mean, you know, candidly, everybody's at risk, but if, if, again, if you do simple things like second level verifications for, for any transfers, things like that. And those are things we need to be talking to our banks about.
We already do that.
Eric already does that.
No, 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 no. Eric, I'm asking because I'm pretty sure that you have to verify any transaction. Like the transaction that we had that went out, did you have to verify that?
Yes.
Yes. And you verified that because it seemed like a logical transaction as to what they were doing.
Yeah, but that should have, that transaction should have thrown red flags.
That transaction, okay, wait a second. That transaction should have thrown red flags to the treasurer.
Right.
So let's, let's talk that through and I'll tell you what actually happens. So we have any ACH requires the person who sets it up um, cannot automatically approve. All ACHs get approved by me. Now, what we have done is that what I do is I look at, in, in the vast majority of ACHs that come through here, almost all of them are for either our MRF payments, our health benefit payments, um, or our payments to Ram High School. And those are on a fixed schedule.
They're all repetitive.
So I have, you know, I know, I look at the budget, make sure the money's there. I look at the, whether it's, you know, on an expected schedule or it matches up with an invoice. And that's what I check. But honestly, I don't go back through and look at the routing number. Um, you know, in, in, look at, you know, the, the transaction details in, in that. I probably should.
Well, what we should have and the bank should have given you is a checklist verification that says something like, um, you know, has anything changed in this transaction from a previous transaction? Like if the account number's changing, any of that stuff are red flags. Um, and that's not necessarily your fault. Well, that's, that's a fault of the, the bank really should have had that in place.
Well, and, and so you're, I, I agree with you. And the one thing I've done is I put in a policy that says anytime there is a change in an ACH, so it's not an ACH going to the same account we always send to, we have to verbally call the company and verify that the information is correct.
And you're calling them at the standard phone number, not the one they send you in the email?
Correct.
Yep. I mean, look, and that's what it comes down to. It's just common sense. Don't click on a link you don't recognize. Don't, don't, don't click on a link in an email ever. You know? It's not that hard.
So anytime your phone rings and it goes beep, you hang up, right? Those are common sense things.
No, I mess with them.
You mess with them? Do you listen to them? Do you just sit there and ask them what?
Yeah, I keep on the line, I keep on the line as long as I can. It's fun.
I do too. I, when they tell me I could get a free, you know, a zero interest visa, I say, great, how do I get it? Oh, you gotta give me your visa account. I'm like, no, I thought you were giving me one. Then they get mad.
It's fun.
I put them on speakerphone when I'm driving. Why not?
Well, it's fun. Gives you something to do.
All right. So, uh, personally.
What's your take on this, Jeff? I mean, you're on the financial side. What's your take?
I would never spend $10,000. Well, listen, insurance is, um, you just, you're just mad you don't have it when you get hit. But $10,000 is way too much of a policy premium for me, for what I believe we, we deal with in the community. Because what systems are we running in our town that are gonna be compromised, that are gonna kill us? We don't have a financial system.
Well, that's what I, I, my take on this is the same as yours. And we're backing everything up anyways. So our biggest risk is someone accessing our account and transferring. Which if we have two level verification, it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed anymore to some, some phishing email training just to see if the employees fall for it. If they do, retrain them.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I'd rather spend a thousand bucks on a company to come in and do, once we're out of COVID, to come in and do a session every year, remind employees, show them what fishy links look like, all of that stuff.
But then they send them emails to their account to see if they click the link.
So they sound, kinda like you do sales call training, that type of thing, you know?
They, they send fake emails to the accounts to see if they click on the link. And if they're not taking it seriously, then it's time we make the employees take it seriously.
Just click on nothing.
Click on nothing, exactly. Okay, what I would say is that statewide, other than workers comp, um, cyber crimes are some of the biggest payouts right now in the insurance industry. And if you think about it, between 169 towns, there's been over $2 million worth of claims this year. This year. So, you know?
So, my point is. Let's do the math on that. There's, there's $2 million worth of claims and 169 towns. And they're asking us for what kind of premium?
Yeah, they're asking for 10 and it's only 11.
Yeah, it's only 11. Self-insured. I mean, listen, I, I know they think it's gonna go up, but that's a lot of money. So that's coverage.
Okay. Okay, i- if it's a risk you're willing to take, then.
Well, I, I would ask. I would ask, it, it definitely is a risk that I would be willing to, to take. But I would ask, I would ask you, what systems could be compromised? I mean, our email is, is external.
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry, I gotta hop off.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That Diane Choquet is on.
Yeah.
And that is what she did for a living. If you want to ask advice about that, she's probably a far better source of that than I am. You know, in terms of what the risks are today.
Diane, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, what do you think?
The, the whole crux of the thing is really training your employees. That's where, for a town our size, it's training the employees. Cause that's where it's gonna happen. Somebody's gonna inadvertently get taken with a phishing scam or an email or something. And that's what's gonna happen. I don't think any, you know, as long as we're backing up everything and we don't keep people's personal credit card stuff or anything in our systems, then, you know, we're gonna be okay. As far as the risk goes, you know, the risk is the people.
Okay, so Eric, we accept no credit card transactions that are not through the tax collector's office, which is an outside service.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I mean, the, the true danger is the fact that, you know, we have about 4 million in the bank. And what happens if, you know, um, somebody does something fraudulent? You know?
Well, um, since there's, um, limited access to that, that, I mean, what are there? Three people in the community in, in the, the town hall that have access to it?
Right now, two.
Okay, so let's just tell them exactly who to go after. Um, no. I, I don't think, I, you know, that, that to me is Diane is right, training, train the people and we have, I mean, we have dual signatures on all checks. Isn't that accurate?
Yes, correct.
I mean, there's not even a limit, like a $200 check that you could sign. So.
No, a check for a dollar requires two signatures.
Two signatures. So, so train the employees, send out the, the test emails and see what the heck happens. And let's see what we can do.
I mean, I'll just make a comment. The training the employees is the hardest part. You know, when I worked for the large bank, I mean, we failed a lot when we trained our employees and sent out the test emails. People clicked on crap all the time. I mean, so it's, it was constant training. Do you know what I mean? So it's gotta be a, culturally, it has to be a heightened awareness from the people. And once you get that buy-in, then you get to a safer level.
All right, has, um, has South Windsor, Eric, does South Windsor give you, uh, any advice or any, any, anything that we can do to put up some additional barriers and some fences around our email system?
Um, I can certainly ask that question. Um, you know, I think we've spent a lot of money and a lot of effort trying to physically secure. Cause I mean, if you think about, where do you end up with big cyber claims? You end up when, when somebody packs your system and has control of all your data and you can't recover your data unless you pay them a shitload of money. So that's one possibility. Um, you know, and, and that's one of the most common and that's one of the most expensive for a lot of towns. Cause most towns aren't paying hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, you know, because they fraudulently paid somebody a couple hundred thousand dollars. Most of those tend to be smaller amounts similar to what we have. Where they get nailed is when they gotta spend a lot of money to reconstitute their system. You know, and bring in somebody to rebuild their system. You know, that, that's the, one of the bigger costs. Um, you know, so far we're, you know, again, it, it, a lot of that boils down to, uh, you know, employee, employee behavior. Because as long as employees aren't putting any of their personal devices behind the secured networks, you know, you're probably okay with the firewalls we have. But all it takes is one person who knows the town's secure, you know, wifi password from connecting something onto the network that shouldn't be on it, and you have a potential security risk. Um, so I mean, I don't think there's any way you can make it 100% secure. You know, you can have redundant backup. You know, so you can probably reconstitute your servers and your systems. Um, but it's not gonna be, you know, you're gonna spend a bunch of money doing it. You know? So I think we're, I guess what I would say is we are a hell of a lot less vulnerable than we were a year ago or a year and a half ago. But nothing's in, I mean, look at what's going on right now with the Department of Defense. I mean, pretty much most of the, the, the major state agencies are dealing with the effects of a huge security breach. You know, and they got resources we can't even touch. So, I mean, to think that it can't happen to us, I, I think is a, is a bad risk.
I don't, I don't necessarily know that we're, we're saying that it can't happen. The odds of it are one thing, and then there's a $10,000 price tag on an insurance policy.
Mm-hmm, yep, right. And, and that's kind of the crux of it is, is it worth, are we better self-insuring? You know, enrolling the dice and hoping we don't get, get banged?
Well, i- if you sit there and you think about it, and maybe this is something for another meeting, just how long would it take us to back, to, to restore? If we had to, if we sat there and said, we got compromised today and they impacted our server, forget the hard cost, what would it take for us to back, to get our data back? So maybe a server fried or a server's locked up, but what would it take to get our data back? And, and really, what are the data points? Like I sit there and I'm. And and really, what are the data points? Like, I sit there and I'm wondering, what what do we have? We have individual files. Um, the assessor's office and the tax collector's officer outsourced to an outside. Entity that the the computer systems.
I don't know that that's necessarily the case. We are not paying for the cloud-based version of Vision.
Okay.
That's internal on our server.
Okay, Vision, Vision is just data, just data. That's that is the. The information about the individual properties. So do we back that that up? Those are all things that we should sit there and get analysis of and say, at one of these meetings, have a conversation about our computers. And about our data and how it's backed up and how quickly it could be restored and what would happen if something even happened to the servers? I mean.
Right, yep.
I I don't think, I mean, I sit there and I think the biggest problem would be the financial system, but. We're in the process of building a financial system. We don't even have it. So we're using an antiquated system that is. I don't, I mean, we have enough trouble getting into that software. I'm sure a hacker would have a hell of a time trying to get into that server, that system, so. Anyway.
It sounds like the answer, at least at this point, is we're not gonna pursue an independent policy. Am I correct in that assumption? Okay.
Unless we wanna vote on it, I would tell you no.
Do we wanna look at a package for phishing training, like email, like a, I was just looking at a few companies online? Wanna have Eric get some prices for that and talk about that next meeting?
I mean, if if, yeah, if if. I I'm all for, you know, I'll get with South Windsor and see what else we can do in terms of training setups for employees.
I'm I'm all for prevention and then dealing with it after the fact, you know, if we can prevent it in the first place. I think that's our best route is like like Diane said.
Can you take that spreadsheet down? I don't think we need that anymore.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I I dual screen, so I'm used to seeing all your faces anyway, smiling away.
Absolutely. Is there anything else the three of us would like to do without the other two members? Is there anything, Eric, you want us to to go over? I mean, there's nothing that's. I mean, after looking at the budget, I mean, there's, are there any other components that we should ask Eric about now and have him get information on? Any other sections of the budget?
I mean, honestly, if you take out employee salary and benefit. And capital, you know, there's not a lot else in the budget that's variable.
I mean, the biggest thing we have, we have to talk about, and maybe we do this next week, and Eric, if we prepare for this, is all of the capital requirements. That we're looking at because those are the biggest numbers.
Correct.
We have to look at that and then make determinations as to what we send to to the Board of Finance. And then uh, we should talk. Uh, I would guess Jeff, next week more about the Board of Education and those numbers.
So I I was gonna get on that meeting and see what the discussion was.
Okay. You know, one thing that I would like to know, Eric. Because our numbers are. They they include the pre-K numbers. Can you find out if Marlboro and Hebron have? Numbers uh, for under. Like what they have for under pre-K for three three-year-old, four-year-olds and five-year-olds that are not in kindergarten? I I would like to know what they're including in their numbers, because Jeff, if you take your numbers the way you did it and subtract out that class. You know, I would like to know if the other towns. Are are including them.
Well, I could tell you for a fact, our town, they're included.
And I I know they're included.
Yeah, they're included. And when you look at our budget, it it's um. The the grants that are in there and the tuition are not part of our overall budget request. But they're included in the numbers for their state reporting. So if you take out those, you take out those thirty preschool students, that number jumps from twenty-two, twenty-three thousand up to almost to twenty-five. Well, so that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I would sit there and say, if that's the case, let's sit there and say, what was the number that you used?
Which for a four.
For that, for the, you took out fifty? How many children did you take out?
About thirty.
Thirty, there's thirty preschoolers currently, so.
Thirty preschoolers.
And I just went with a general number of one fifty, cuz there is some out placements too as well.
Yeah, well, those thirty. You know, if I understood it correctly, uh, they're they're asking for seventy thousand for those thirty.
Just for, they're looking for benefits for the teachers and the parents.
Benefits. And the rest of that is supposed to be covered by grants and tuition.
Yeah, and my my contention is the whole thing should be contention. That should be a, that should be a break-even preschool. They should. Tuition should be based on a break-even point in registration.
You know, I I I. I would like to sit there and see a little bit more analysis, cuz I went to the RAM, uh, RAM has a. I I was searching to sit there and see what what. Hebron was doing and and what they had in, and I got to the RAM uh, preschool program that's run by A H M. And their numbers were.
Identical to ours.
Yeah, or lower. It might have been lower.
No, they're six, their tuition was six hundred dollars as well.
Oh, that's true, cuz it's only a ten-month program. Okay, all right, yeah. All right. That is something that uh. You know, the numbers. I mean, the one thing that I would tell you from the information that I sent you, if you look at. If you look at Marlboro's number, that is unbelievable.
Yeah, and if you if you took Marlboro's numbers and you apply them to Andover, it's, we're paying a million dollars more to educate our children than Marlboro.
Million.
Million dollars more.
I I just don't know if the the. You don't like that state number, because I will tell you, Jeff, after we went and we went to the meeting at RAM, what was it, last year?
Yep.
When we went to sit there and determine and Eric was there and we went and listened to the state education department talk about towns. And we were not subjected to, oh, I forgot what the term was, but.
Minimum budget.
But that. You know, when five years ago, we didn't have preschool and we had two hundred and seventy-five children just in kindergarten through sixth grade. Now, in that same group, so every time I hear the comparison between old years, I'm like going.
Jeff, it's fuzzy math.
It's math, yeah. And and I hate the state system because of the numbers that they put up there. Don't, it never logically works for me.
Right, and and the other thing that's tough to compare with the state numbers is. There's a couple different formulas there they use. One. You know, and and it, they're not all up numbers. They include some categories, but not others. And it it does make it tough to compare. And you know, in the past, what I've done is I basically looked through each town's budget. And picked out what they identified for their elementary school budget. Um, you know, to use as apples-to-apples comparisons and then just compare just the direct ask. So not including any grants, cuz we're presuming we don't see that in either system to try to get a fair comparison. But it it's it's actually pretty difficult to get a a. A reasonable apples-to-apples comparison. Um, but there's no question that smaller school systems are more expensive. Um, and we are a. You know, we're an expensive school, but that's in part driven by the fact that that's really driven by class size. I mean, if, all you have to do is you have to look at the metric of average class size for a town. You know, and compare that to total student cost. And it's basically a one-to-one match. So the the, you know, and that's really what what defines the cost, cuz it's your cost of teachers. You know, regardless of how you dice it and whether you agree with the budget or not, that's the driver.
And I agree a hundred percent with with your assessment, but when Marlboro's doing it and we're causing, it costs us twenty-five percent more. I mean, that's a, that's a big, that's a big number. It's a large number to swallow.
So even if you sat there and you took the number and you said. There's a five thousand dollar difference between Hebron's per pupil costs that were provided. And ours, and even if you sat there and you said twenty-five hundred dollars and you took a reduction of twenty-five hundred dollars, you you're. What are you talking about?
A million dollars.
Yeah, it's it's significant.
Significant.
So and and yeah, I don't know if you realize that, Jeff, but which what Valerie sent us today, if you look at the costs. And you take out the two regional districts at the top. Um, we're number eight out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns as far as school costs for elementary school. We're number eight. Which is is pretty expensive. We're we're right up there.
Well. As our last conversation was, all I cared about is I wanted to know what Hebron and Marlboro were. Because.
And I got that.
That's where our children are going. I mean, and. Listen, this comes down to a very. The what Eric said is very true. It's it's, you have to be willing to make cuts. To to get, I mean, Marlboro must have had certain things go going on on their board, cuz they made. They made decisions that were in the best interests of of the entire community, whereas right now we have. We have kids in small classes and it's great for those kids and it's great for those parents, but financially, it's very, it's costly.
Yeah, another thing I wanna bring up is I talked to uh, one of the teachers on, one of the ex-teachers on the uh, Andover Board today. And, you know, we were discussing class sizes and salary and he mentioned that, you know, South Windsor and Manchester, they pay significantly more per teacher. And I said, how much is significant? You know, it's like four or five thousand dollars more, but their class sizes are on average twenty-three to twenty-eight. So, I mean, we've got teachers for four or five thou, we're paying four or five thousand dollars less. But they're only have maybe twelve, fifteen kids in the classroom as opposed to uh, teaching your classes double that size, so.
Well, Jeff, you would know this more than anybody else. How many new teachers do we have in that school?
It's very top-heavy as far as uh, uh, teacher, like uh, older teachers, teachers that have been tenured for a while. And they're up on the top of the pay scale. And so that's contributing to to some of the, some of the issue.
Okay, well, we'll have to sit there and research that a little bit more. Eric, what I would ask you, just, you know, if you could, is find out. Do Marlboro and and Hebron include any? Uh, below pre-K students in their calculations in their numbers?
I I think Marlboro only does half-day, when I was looking into it.
But I wanna know if they're in their four hundred and forty-nine calculation. I mean, because I know they're in our one ninety-one. I mean, so if we're gonna go with the calculation, Jeff, the way that you put it out there, we have to understand if. Other towns are including or are not including.
Well, when I spoke to Valerie, that's how they, that's how they do report them. So that my guess is they are in there.
Well, look at Hebron. Does Hebron even have it? Because they have the A H M program.
I think they're half-day as well, too. Last time I checked, they were having a half-day preschool as well. So they don't have the, they don't have, they're not working out the grant and have the full-day program, I believe. I think it's through A H M.
Okay.
Maybe wrong, but.
But it would be those parents are pay, those parents are paying for that service.
Correct, correct. And then I checked, you know, like I said, I checked around, um. Um, I reached out to Robin Green and and a couple other, I think I reached out to Mother Goose in South Windsor and a couple other daycare providers that didn't issue school. And it was anywhere from ten fifty to twelve hundred dollars a month. And they charge by the week instead of the month. Because there's a lot of weeks where we have, a lot of months where we have five weeks in a year, in a month, so. Sometimes we're charging by the month and we're getting five weeks of preschool for four weeks of tuition. So that was one recommendation that I made to Valerie as well. And to adjust the tuition upwards. I didn't see anywhere in those grants, I read them fully, that there was no uh. Requirement to set the tuition at a certain rate. It's just that the formulas they are based, they just have a, the tuition's based on a percentage of your income.
All this information that you got, Jeff, was off of a state site, correct?
Yeah, you can go to, actually, I think A S has got the links to the grants. And you can actually go online and 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 read the grants.
So every bit of information that is put in here has to be the same information from school to school. So if there's, is or isn't, no, Jeff, you're not.
I don't believe that they all.
According to Valerie, they all report the same. And that's what she told me today.
Okay, then just ask the, I want the question answered. Does Marlboro or does Hebron have have? Student classifications the way we're doing it? I, that's all, it's all I'd be after, because.
Any way you crunch these numbers, Jeff, they all look bad.
Well, they they look worse.
They they go from bad to worse.
They go from bad to worse. I mean, right now, with the way that they're, the metrics and the way that they, that Valerie even laid them out for us. Our per pupil spend is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and Hebron's spend is sixteen thousand and twenty dollars. And Marlboro's spend is fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars per pupil. It's a five thousand, what did I do? Five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollar per pupil additional spend. Between us and the closest town that we have to deal, go to RAM with, and that's Hebron. Five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars per pupil.
Times a hundred and fifty kids is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And and, you know, I I think that's why Bolton looked at our spending. You know, a little over a year ago and said, hey, you know, um. Um, you know, we'd be more than happy to absorb it.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure they would. And and I'm sure that's, that's. But what we have to do is we have to make our point to the Board of Education and to the Board of Finance that, listen, we can. We can do it. We can, we we want to keep our our school, we want to keep it in our community. We just, we just need to have a rational discussion as to what can be cut and what can't be cut. And and what subclass sizes can happen and what class sizes can't happen. That has to be a discussion the Board of Education has to happen. The only thing we can do, honestly, is go back and say. We don't believe your spend should be over X. And if this board agrees to it, then we send it to the Board of Finance and we let the Board of Finance go through it. And if the Board of Education doesn't choose to it, choose to do it, then. We go to the polls and vote. That's all this is. It's not, it's not being mean. It's not, it's just. There's a number out there for me that they should spend.
Yeah, Jeff, and I agree with your point. And I think it's more rights, it's called right sizing. We need to right-size that school for the amount of, the amount of students that we have. And um, and getting back to Eric's point about the Bolton, when Bolton was talking to us about. Uh, regionalizing with them, I mean, we came away from that first, I think it was one of our first meetings we did as a board. We got together and we were talking about, you know, we put together that committee to try to look at some cost savings and. That committee, I believe, is still together and it's been two years and I still haven't seen anything come from that committee. Regarding, you know, trying to 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 get some savings in the school by.
Shared services.
Yeah, by sharing services. I mean, I I believe that the Board of Ed Chair was was heading that up and. I haven't heard anything. So I don't know if they ever took that seriously. But, you know, here we are in the eleventh hour looking at this and no recommendations have come in two years.
If we could get, uh, Eric, if you could get, at least for my own benefit, if you could get that information from the towns, just ask them. The numbers of students and what grades they all pertain in. So if Hebron is saying they have six hundred and sixty-four students in their. Uh, elementary school system, just get the classes that they're related to. We can then compare it to what Andover's groupings are and. As Scott said, it'll go from bad to worse, depending upon what those numbers show us. Um, but then it just comes down to us as a group. Committing to go back to the Board of Education and ask them to to do the spend. I mean. Listen, we asked them to do a larger spend than they did last year. They came back with a partial number. Now they're coming with an eight hundred and eight point three five percent increase. It's it's not a small number.
Again. So the other thing I would, and and, you know, I sent something to both you and Mark Brinker about it, but. You know, I, I think. The town needs to address the RAM issue also. You know, or make a decision not to, one or the other, either tackle it or don't, but. But that's gonna be, that's obviously the biggest single expense we have in our budget is RAM. You know.
Only thing about that, Eric, cuz I'm not as concerned about that, because if you look at their per students' cost, they're down around seventeen thousand.
Right.
So, I mean, it's.
No, they're not, actually.
Well, that's what they're reporting out, and that's what I sent you today.
They were. At some point in the past, they were at that.
Well, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen year, which is the last reportable year to the state, they reported seventeen thousand.
Right, so how many kids are there in RAM? Just under twelve hundred, their budget's thirty-two million dollars all up. Do the math, that's not seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah, but some of that's taken up with grant money, too. That may be their budget, but there might be some grants in there.
So what they ask for in taxation is about thirty million. So do the same thing, thirty million divided by twelve hundred, um, that's not seventeen thousand dollars either. Twenty-six thousand. Correct. Correct, so what I'm saying is that RAM is spending an awful lot of money per student. Right or wrong, that they are. You know.
And I'm saying do the same thing with Andor, you do the math with the hundred and fifty students that we are quote, paying for, it's up around twenty-eight thousand.
I think we should tackle A E S first.
Well. We have to sit there and do them both at the same time, and Eric is not wrong. Focus on, we need to.
Eric, you're right. I can be right or wrong, I mean, I'm, I'm just me, I'm just providing you data, you know, what you choose to do with it is your own.
Correct, so maybe, maybe what we also do is we ask RAM for their per-student calculation, just like I asked Valerie, why don't we ask them for? And I didn't ask Valerie for the two-thousand-and-eighteen, two-thousand-and-nineteen number, I asked her for her per-student calculation on her current budget. So I appreciate what Valerie did, I thanked her for the information, but I don't like the, the state website, I don't like how it's done, I don't. You know, I. I would rather get the information, okay, this is my budget, this is what I'm spending, these are the students that I project to be in the school, this is the number. Should be really easy.
Right.
We should ask RAM to do it on their current budget, what their spend is, and I will go back to Valerie and I'll ask her to do it on her current budget.
I mean, I can get you that number pretty easily because I crunched that already.
Through the Board of Selectmen so we can all see.
Good.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to do tonight? I think we've offended enough people tonight. Right? Have we offended you, Eric?
Not tonight, plenty of other nights, but not tonight.
Okay.
Everybody equally.
Equally, we try our best. All right, um, so.
We have yet to have our meeting about you, Eric.
Yes, so we're gonna go to public speak right now, so, uh, Diane Chaket, would you like to participate in public speak at the end of our meeting?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right, Joanne Ebert?
Guys, yeah, I'm definitely gonna say a couple things, cuz, um, I have some info on some things that were spoken about tonight. You were talking about the library person, I think it is a good thing to, that you can move ahead with like an M O U. Memo of understanding, again, I know, I just take an interest, so if I have a little facts, I just wanted to say. We do that a lot with our contracts, if there's someone that doesn't kind of fit the bill, you were going back and forth with adding salary or. You know, all the figures you can do in M O U with that person for the twenty-six hours, you know, she's kind of. On a separate, you know, and continue to receive the benefits, which is different than your personnel policies. And then, moving on to just, I just wanna say for the record, too, cuz she's here. I know that I popped in about Amanda, and I've said a couple things about the position. You know, and I've, I've asked a couple questions because I realize when you change a position like that. It's gonna be different than, you know, she seems great, uh, she's always been great with me, and I wish her nothing but the best. So I was kinda listening to her input. One thing I did wanna say, because we have it in our town, is that her board clerk responsibilities. Are totally different than her town job. It's my understanding, and I think you can get backup, that she can do the nineteen hours as an administrative assistant, get all of that money. And then, you know, look, good for her, good girl, she gets a hundred dollars a meeting or whatever, and then additional money. She does not need to be offered benefits on that. I mean, make your, make your decisions that you're going to decide, I realize it's a big choice and a lot to take in. But I think those things are different, and Adrian was getting to that point, I think he was really, you know, bringing it up, and. I thought he was getting there, like, she can do her nineteen hours, that's her town job. Her board clerk, cuz it's totally different, it is the same, cuz we have a lot of people that do clerking in our town as well. Uh, just wanted to say that. And the RAM issue, I agree with you that you have to tackle it, but I was like one of only a few people. That went to those meetings last year and tried to speak up, that's, that's gonna be so hard. I, I hope it needs to be done as well with everything you're doing, but again, um, I really don't think they listen. And then they come out with their big capital plan, even in a pandemic year, so. And lastly, and thank you for listening, just every time you vote in your raise and everything, that, those are, whatever you're gonna do, that's your job. But it does. Increase the benefits and all of that that they all receive, and luckily, the town of Andover folks are getting some good benefits, so. It does go into their retirement and, and that. I think that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All right, all those in favor. Bye, uh, thank you very much, our last thing, uh, we all are coming to a meeting, what is next meet, is the next meeting next Wednesday or next Tuesday?
Uh, next Monday.